Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education for March 6, 2017. For those at home, you do not have to adjust your television. I am not Colleen Burton. Mrs. Burton is not here this evening, so I have the pleasure of running the meeting. Again, this is our Committee of the Whole Meeting. This is a meeting where if you want to know what we're thinking, this is the meeting to tune into. There'll be a lot more discussion here than you will hear in our normal voting meetings regularly each month. At this point, I want to turn it over to Superintendent Oquist for a moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Johnson. I just wanted to take a moment and extend our sincere and deepest sympathy to the family of Rick Austin, a wonderful teacher at Churchill High School who also taught at the Career Center, who passed away last night. I'd like to send our condolences to his wife, Annette, and to their family, to all of our colleagues at Churchill and at the Career Center, to the staff, and to the students, including members of the track team who are getting ready to start up another, what I'm sure to be a successful season with him. And Rick was a great man with a ready smile, who will be greatly missed by his friends and colleagues, of course, his family, and all of us.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. I'd also like to indicate that at the conclusion of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, we're going to have a special voting meeting. There's a couple of items that we need to move on tonight. If you want to follow along on the agenda, we have agendas on the table outside of the boardroom. If you're watching at home, you can go to the Board tab and highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agendas, and you can follow us along there. The first item is Item 1, Audience Communication, and I do not have any blue slips. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 2, which is our Finance Committee, and our Chair, Mrs. Panifield.
Thank you, Vice President Johnson. Our first item is Item A. It's 2016-17 General Fund Budget Amendment Number 2, and Mrs. Smith is going to help us out with that.
It's my pleasure to sit with you here tonight. This is my first time going over a budget amendment with you all, and I know for a few it's your first time seeing a budget amendment. So, the state of Michigan has an accounting manual that we're required to follow, and I printed that off to share a few sections with you. I thought it would be helpful for us all to make sure we're on the same page, so if you'll allow me, I'll just read a brief. So, this is, again, from the Michigan Department of Education's Accounting Manual, and this is just an introduction to the purpose of a budget. Budgeting for a school district is the process of allocating limited resources to the various educational expenditure priorities of the district. The General Appropriation Act, or School Board, adopted budget represents the legal authority for the school district administration to spend money. The school board's vote to adopt the budget implies that a set of decisions has been made to allocate the district's limited revenues to pay or not to pay for a certain set of educational items or services. So, that's how we're, just something to keep in mind as we start looking at the budget. So, I passed around our budget packet, and on the first page is just our cover, and then the next page is our table of contents. The first item that you'll find is our resolution. It's our general fund revenue budget, and I wanted to share another thing on what exactly is our general fund. So, the general fund, all transactions related to the operation of the school district, except those transactions required by law to be entered in other funds, are recorded in the general fund. Local taxes and all other operating revenues or assets received or due from local, state, and federal sources are recorded in this fund. Expenditures financed by these revenues are also recorded in the general fund. So, I'm happy to report that this budget amendment, we have some good news. Our revenues are up 4.7 million from our first budget amendment, and that's largely due to three items. The first of which is the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. So, we are including in our budget $4.5 million related to the Enhancement Millage, and what that represents is the $385 per student times our current February student count, what's on our state aid report, times 80 percent. I've been working with the county and getting, because this is our first time collecting this tax, we wanted to be a little conservative. So, they first published, or first recommended using 85 percent of that number, the 385 times your number of students, and now that the collections have started to come in, they've updated that and said, "To be safe, we would recommend you use 80 percent." So, you know, hopefully when I come back to you with a final budget amendment, you know, we'll be able to increase that a bit, but I didn't want to prematurely put something in the budget that I wasn't sure how it would actually work out, so.
I'll just add a quick note on that. One of the things that was shared with both the Wayne County superintendents, as well as the Wayne County business officials, was a reminder that the tax collection on this levy takes place throughout all of Wayne County. Those monies are collected and deposited at Wayne County RISA, and then deposited, then sent back out to the districts as they're received. So, although we have a very high tax collection rate in Livonia, about 97 percent, that is not the same across all of Wayne County. So, we will not receive, you know, all of those taxes will not be paid by the end of the fiscal year, and so we've taken their guidance very carefully, and their most recent is to account for the 80 percent as Ms. Smith talked about, and then we'll continue to update that. And so, we will, we may continue to get those dollars in next year and the year after as some of those back taxes are paid, but we need to plan on budgeting for the dollars that we will actually see deposited in Livonia Public Schools' account. Does that make sense?
The next item to highlight on our revenue, we also had an increase of $800,000. Again, you'll find this in the local sources, and that is a result of a one-time payment from Wayne County from their Act 18 Fund, and it was issued to us to help offset some of our special education transportation costs, and we record those costs in our general fund, so I'm recognizing that $800,000 in our general fund as well. And the third adjustment, in our original proposed budget and also in the First Amendment, we included $800,000 from the sale of property. That sale, we don't anticipate closing by June 30th, so I've reduced our revenue by 800,000, so, you know, hopefully we'll see that in our 1718 budget, but for now, that has been removed from our general fund revenue. So, in addition to our revenue being up $4.7 million, our expenditures are down $1 million, another positive thing, and the result of that is during our first budget amendment, our consultant used the 2015-16 year-to-date expenditures and, as a starting point, and then on top of that, he built into the negotiated contracts what we had settled on, so he increased the budget by $1.8 million for that, and then he also increased the budget for $300,000 worth of various line items across the support services functions. So, what wasn't accounted for in our first budget amendment was the cost savings we had projected from 2015-16 into the 1617 school year. Like, one of the primary things would be retirement of teachers. When the teachers retire, they're typically towards the top end of the pay scale, and then when we are replacing them, the teachers are primarily towards the lower end of the pay scale, so there's savings, and that's savings that we included in our projected budget, but it wasn't included in our First Amendment to you. So, I've taken those savings into consideration for this budget amendment, and I also was able to decrease the budget for a few utilities, our heating and electric. We've had, you know, a warmer winter, which has been fantastic, and then, you know, also the electricity, we've seen some decreases there, so. And also, just as a, how I go about our budget, I look at each line item in the general fund, and I use, our largest expense in the general fund, or actually across all of our funds, is our staff cost. That makes up about 85 percent of our budget, and so what I use when I'm projecting how much we're going to spend on staff, I take our contracts that are in place, and we have a report that we can run, call it an encumbrance report, and that gives me our contracts currently, and then it shows me what the balance of those contracts is still to be paid. So, I use that as a basis for this budget. And then for the purchase services, normally that's, I budget for those based on history, you know, looking at the last few years, also comparing that to what we've spent so far this year, and then I adjust accordingly. So, between the revenues being up and the expenditures being down, we are looking at a better fund balance than what we had anticipated at our first budget amendment. We're just over $11 million, which represents 7.53 percent of our total revenues, and if you look at the fund balance as the state calculates it, that's 8.85 percent. And the difference between the fund balance as a percentage of total revenues and then how the state's calculating it, the state does not consider restricted state revenues in their denominator when they're calculating the fund balance, so that actually helps us when they're calculating our percentage of fund balance. They have a lower denominator because they aren't considering those restricted state funds, because they know you can't use that for anything. They have a specific purpose. An example of that would be our 31A at-risk funds. Those come to us through the state aid, but they have to be used for a specific purpose, so, yeah. So, that's, you know, our first page is, again, that revenue. On the second page, you'll find, find our expenditures for the general fund, and here it's listed out by function. So, the top is instruction, the middle section you'll see supporting, then community services, and then we have some other financing uses. Any, any questions on the general fund? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mrs. Panifield. Ms. Smith, with the percentage now, we're above the 5 percent, correct?
We are.
And the 5 percent is the early warning?
Yes, that is correct.
How long do we stay out of an early warning district?
It's evaluated every year, so we'll, once again, have to submit calculations, or the state will do calculations. I believe they do that every summer, so they'll evaluate us every year, and they look at a number of things. You know, the fund balance is the one kind of easiest to calculate, but they also look at trends, you know, declining pupils, you know, pupil counts from year to year is also a sign of potential financial distress. They look at your use of your fund balance. If you're continually dipping into your fund balance, they also see that as a potential signal for financial distress, so they consider a number of factors, but the, yeah, the one that you're referring to, the 5 percent, they say if you're under 5 percent, that there's a, there's additional reporting that's going to be required of the district because they see you heading towards being a deficit district, so I'm very happy that we're moving away from 5 percent.
Based on what you said, though, just because we're over the 5 percent doesn't necessarily mean that we're not still under the microscope, right?
Yep, that is correct. They'll take a number of factors into consideration every year.
Okay. What's the recommended fund balance? Does the state recommend that for us?
The state hasn't come out with a number, but I know the average across the state is just over 10 percent, and according to the Michigan School Business Officials, they recommend a 15 percent fund balance. So, our fund balance, although it's better than what we were with our First Amendment, is still below the state average fund balance percentage, as well as the recommendation from the Michigan School Business Officials.
Right, well, okay. All right, thank you.
Perfect. I'll continue on. Again, I, the next page, Page 3, is our Funded Projects Fund, and I wanted to elaborate a bit on that, again, because we've got some new board members, and I, again, this is just beneficial for everybody, and I'm, again, reading from the Michigan Accounting Manual. Many districts may have grants or other programs that may, they may consider special revenue funds. However, if those programs or grants are used for the primary purpose of educating the district's K-12 pupils, they are to be reported in the general fund on the comprehensive annual financial report, reported to the state. The district may maintain them internally in separate funds, but for state reporting, they should be combined in the general fund. So, I wanted to clarify with you that we do keep our federal, or our funded projects in a separate fund because it adds a level of detail so that it helps us with our tracking of the expenses, but when I report our financial report to the state, this does get combined with the general fund. So, as I was putting the budget book together, I tried to put it in order. The Funded Projects Fund, again, is included in the general fund when that gets reported up to the state, as well as, on the next page, we'll get to that, is the Athletic Fund. That's also considered general fund when reported up to the state, and I can share with you what they, how they address that in the accounting manual. Interscholastic athletic funds have been considered special revenue funds in the past. However, with the implementation of Gatsby 54, for most districts, the interscholastic athletics will become part of the general fund. And again, because we, just for our reporting purposes, for us tracking it, we've always had a separate fund to track our athletic costs and our revenues, but when I report the financial expenditures to the state, that gets included in the state. So, this first page is our funded projects. Top, and you can see the revenues and expenditures, and then there's some revenue details. Is there any questions on that? Pretty standard. The next is our Athletic Fund, and again, this is included in the general fund. One thing I wanted to mention, too, the accounting manual from the state was just updated in August of 2016, so I took this as an opportunity, as I was working on the budget amendment, to confirm that how we are presenting the budget is in compliance with the state requirements. So, we've made a couple changes to how the revenues and expenditures are reported, but it doesn't change the dollars, just, you know, how they're, yeah, exactly how they're reported or shown on here. Yeah?
Yes. Can, can you talk about, on expenditures for athletic directors and coaches from the increase? There was, there's a large increase. Is there a reason for that?
Yep, there is. That is our athletic directors. Previously, the athletic directors were included in our general fund, and so, again, as we're looking through the line items, I moved the athletic directors over to our Athletic Fund, which then, you can see on the general fund transfer, so we have a larger general fund transfer to cover the cost of those athletic directors, but that is not a new cost, it's not an additional cost from the district, it's just a different way of reporting it.
Okay.
So, it isn't, yeah, no increase, just a different location where it's being reported.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Cool.
Go ahead.
The next is our Food Service Fund. So, the first three funds, the general fund, the funded projects fund, and the athletic fund are all considered general fund, but as I mentioned, there are certain things, is it, how does it say? Except transactions required by law to be entered into other funds. The Food Service Fund is one of those examples that it's required to be separated and put into its own fund, and just to give you a background of what special revenue funds are, the special revenue funds are used to account for activities where there is a need to determine the results of operations, such as food service, bookstore, community service, cooperative activity, and private purpose trust funds, so. One highlight on the Food Service Fund, you'll see an increase on the Support Services under expenditures, and that is, we are anticipating purchasing some equipment out of the Food Service Fund, so we have an increase there. Our auditors reminded us that we were starting to inch up our fund balance to the maximum allowed by the U.S. Department of Education, and so our Food Service Department has started looking at their needs, what they have, what they'd like to purchase, so we're hoping to have that purchased by June 30th, so I've adjusted the budget.
You might remember, that was a point the auditor made in the fall. Not a bad thing, but just, just the U.S. Department says we can only, we should only keep a certain amount in the Food Service Fund balance, and so they do have some equipment needs, and we're already moving toward some replacement of that.
Mrs. Frank, did you have any other questions?
That was just, not overall fund balance, just the Food Service Fund.
Right, yep, yep.
Next up, on the next page, Page 5, is our Special Education Fund. This is also a special revenue fund that's required to be kept in a separate fund, and this represents our Act 18 County Program. So, the district operates the Moderative Cognitive Impairment Program, the Visually Impaired Program, our Skill Center, the Autistic Program, and also out of the Act 18 Fund are the least restrictive environment. Those are our Follow That Kid pair pros.
Oh, the one and one?
Yep, exactly.
Questions?
The next page is our Debt Retirement Funds, and again, those are required to be kept separately, and I'll read you from the accounting manual. The Debt Service Funds. The receipt of funds for the payment of interest, principal, and other expenditures on long-term bonded debt are recorded in the Debt Service Fund. Primary sources of revenue for this fund are debt, retirement, tax levies, and interest, earned interest. So, we in Livonia keep three separate Debt Service Funds. First was for the 2013 Bond Series 1, the next for the 2013 Bond Series 2, and the third for the 2014 Refunding Bond.
Questions?
Wonderful. Next up is our Capital Projects Funds, and I'll read from the accounting manual. The purpose of the Capital Project Fund is to account for receipt and disbursement of monies used for the acquisition of capital assets, including land, buildings, and equipment. Principal sources of revenue are from the sale of bonds, tax levies, and earned interest. Unexpended resources no longer needed on projects for which the bonds were originally approved generally must be transferred to the Debt Service Fund. Legal counsel should be sought for questions related to the appropriate use of funds levied through a voter-approved millage. So, currently, we have the three Capital Project Funds listed here, and then on the following pages are also our 2013 Bonds Series 1 and Series 2. So, this page is our Sinking Fund, Technology Fund, and then the Capital Projects Fund. That last one listed is where we would deposit revenue from the sale of property. Right now, it's our board policy that that revenue be deposited into a separate fund and then be used for specific purposes.
Questions?
Quick question. And the, from the first budget amendment to the second, and the Technology Fund?
Yep.
There is a reduction in expenditures, that's pretty significant.
Yeah, that was touching base with our IT Director, and originally, so that $500,000 is what we, what we put together last May, what we thought we'd be spending in the 1617 year, and then when I touched base with our Technology Director and I said, "Okay, now what are we actually going to purchase and receive by June 30th?", and we weren't going to receive everything that we had anticipated almost a year ago, so the budget has been adjusted for what we actually anticipate spending by June 30th.
So, that's money that we would expect to spend next fiscal year?
Exactly, yep, and that's money that doesn't get lost, that would just then be, as you can see, included in our fund balance, so that'll be our starting point for the following year.
And that's really one of the things I appreciate Allison doing, is she's literally done this with every single line item in the budget, has gone to the folks in that department to say what will be actually expended by June 30th and updated. That's why you see the decrease in expenditures. You know, of course, we anticipate a year prior as to, you know, where we'll be, and so she really did a significant amount of due diligence on each, each and every budget item to reflect what we anticipate spending, so you will probably see less of an adjustment as we move toward our final budget amendment of the year.
Great.
Mm-hmm. As an addition on, Page 8 is our 2013 Bond Funds. Those, again, are Capital Project Funds. We've used all of our Series 1, and we'll be using our Series 2. I touched base with our owner's representative, and I've increased our capital outlay expenditures based on what we're anticipating spending. Again, that's just as of June 30th.
Questions?
On the next page is our Scholarship Fund, and these are considered trust funds, so we're just holders of the money, you know, this isn't our money to spend. This is donations that have been given to the district for the purpose of issuing scholarships, so not, not much change there, just from the last budget amendment, just updated our beginning fund balance. And then the last fund for your review tonight is the Health and Welfare Fund. So, again, I updated our beginning fund balance based on where we actually ended 2015-16. I've updated some figures, employee contributions, and transfer from other funds, because, again, when we originally put this budget together, that was about a year ago, so now we actually know, you know, contracts have been settled, we know what the employee contributions are, we know what the employer cost is, so I've updated those on here.
Questions? Allison, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you just explain a little bit about what the purpose of the Health and Welfare Fund is?
Yep, that's been used, we keep this as a separate fund for the purpose of having some reserves, having some fund balance available for increases in the health insurance cost. having some fund balance available for increases in the health insurance costs or other different types of insurance. A few years ago, we were self-insured, which meant that we were paying based on actual claims. And so that can, that really depends on what happens with our employees in a given year. So because of the large fluctuations possible, we've always kept this fund separate from the general fund, again, just as a holder for any unforeseen costs that may come our way. So it's changed slightly now that we are premium-based. But there's still some benefit to having this there because we have certain things in here that you, like, for example, workers' claims. Those, again, can vary depending on what happens during the year. We aren't sure what, you know, what would be issued, so. But that's why we maintain this in a separate fund.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Goodbye.
Does anybody have anything else on the budget amendment? Allison, can I make a request?
Sure.
Just maybe to clarify, so it doesn't catch people off base when they're looking maybe for a separate fund, anything that really, in the end, that goes to the state of Michigan should be a part of that fund? Can, just a notation in the, in the header somewhere?
Sure.
Just that it's part of the operating fund and it's part of the general fund in that we keep it separate as, it doesn't have to get that wordy.
Yeah.
But just so that we know when we see the stuff go to the state that we're not, like, missing something.
Yeah, exactly. Yep. That makes sense.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anything else on the budget amendment? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I would just like to commend Allison. This is a really helpful report. I love the way you've broken it out and explained everything. It's really easy to understand. Thank you.
I'm glad. That was my, my goal. I want it to be user-friendly. I know sometimes we can put a lot of detail in there, which, you know, can be helpful, but sometimes can just be overwhelming. So by looking at everything and trying to, you know, simplify it, I think it really does add value because then you can truly see the numbers for what they're worth, so.
So just as a note, I would, I would concur, Mrs. Jarvis, and I think it really gives us a very helpful starting point for our budget discussion. So as you know, last week at our study session, we reviewed the timeline for the budget. And so we'll be moving forward over the next four months as we lead toward the June. You're, bringing to you a budget to approve in June for the, hard to believe, 17, 18 school year. That always used to seem so, so far in the distance. But what we'd like to do is continue the format of the sheet that you have, this horizontal summary sheet. So we utilized this last year during the budget process. But instead of the headings that you'll see here, we'll, we'll continue, we'll bring to you the current second budget amendment figures, and then from there, bring you the various projections based on what we anticipate from the governor's proposed budget. And then as we, as that moves forward through the House and the Senate for their review and their proposed budget. So we'll continue to bring those scenarios to you and then update those numbers each, each meeting as we go forward. So if there's anything other than that, or anything specifically that would be helpful for you to see, we can certainly bring that to you. But this is the format where we'll start as part of that budget planning process with you when we bring those original estimates.
Guys, all good? Okay. Then we'll move on to item B.
Are we going to put this on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Regular.
We put this on regular agenda from March 20th.
Twenty.
So we have a workshop next week and then a voting meeting on March 20th.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're ready to move on to the approval of audit firms.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I've typed up something. I wanted to make sure that I touched upon all the things that I wanted to mention, so I'll read this for you. I'd like to request the approval of the board to once again utilize Plant Moran as our independent external auditor for the 2016, 17 school year. Plant Moran is now one of the nation's largest accounting and management consulting firms with more than 2,000 staff members and 16 offices and provide services to over 200 educational institutions. We have used Plant Moran for the last several years. Plant Moran was selected after the district completed a bid in 2012 for auditing services. And I'm recommending that we maintain Plant Moran to provide consistency at this time. There are new generally accepted accounting principles being instituted, and Plant Moran has been a great resource. They offer regular training throughout the year and are always just a phone call away for accounting advice. This year, the fee for their services is $44,600, which is a $1,100 increase from last year. Yeah. And if you have any questions, we'd like to add this to the, item to the agenda at our March 20 regular board meeting. But if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions, guys? Any questions?
Mrs. Smith, can you just talk about some of the reasons why we might want to continue maintaining them as our accounting firm as opposed to maybe reaching out to some of the other accounting firms in the area?
Sure. Yeah, there is definitely a lot of value with staying with Plant Moran. They are by far the largest K-12 auditors here in the state of Michigan. And one nice thing, when you secure Plant Moran for the year-end audit, their services don't end there. They are a resource throughout the year, which is fantastic. Knowing our ledger and our expenditures and our revenue, having seen it from year to year, when changes do come, different standards change, they are proactive in reaching out to us to give us, you know, a heads up that something's coming. They offer webinars. Yeah, they're just a wonderful resource. So, yeah, that's one of the main reasons. We feel, too, that the cost, what they're requesting is very modest, and it's on par with increases that we're seeing for other purchase services. So we think there's a lot of value with staying.
And, you know, as, as a large district too, Mrs. Bonnefield, certainly to get up to speed in a district our, our size, as we've seen those changes in auditing firms is significant. When they come in, they spend a significant, a significant amount of time here to begin with, and then they go back and complete their work for a number of weeks before they finalize the audit. As you, each time you bring in a new firm and have to go through that process, just learning the, the way that the systems work, the policies and procedures, the ledgers, the layout of accounts, et cetera, is a significant learning curve for any accounting, accounting firm. And so not only is Plant Moran really just a premier, you know, a member in that field, they are also able to get right down to and drill down deeply into our accounts and in our books because they're, they're not spending time getting up to speed. They're there, and as Mrs. Smith said, one of the things that we find as, as a very helpful resource to us is there aren't surprises that come when they come in in the summer. They've, throughout the year, indicated to us changes in accounting practices, or reporting, or what they see on the horizon. Therefore, we're able to be proactive in planning for that prior to their arrival. So they certainly do their due diligence without question in our here for a number of weeks in the summer and then continue that. But what we don't have is that time that we would have to take with, with bringing an entirely new firm up to speed.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Ms. Bonnefield. Ms. Smith, I note that for the, for the bonds, we have a separate auditing firm. Is that correct? Can you explain why we have two?
Sure. Yep. And that's something that we aren't required to do, but we felt would be right, is because Plant Moran Cressa is our owner's representative for our bond and also for our sinking fund, we've hired additional external auditor. Last year, we used Yo and Yo, and they provided an independent audit of our bond fund as well as our sinking fund. So.
And that's because Plant Moran is, is our owner's rep, so we don't, we want to avoid any conflict there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. If there's no other questions, that completes finance.
We need to put this on?
Yeah.
Regular meeting?
Wonderful. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Then that'll move us to item three, building and site, and I will be handling that. And we have a number of items to review tonight. And if I keep talking long enough, it'll give Mr. Francis time to mosey on up to the table.
He's moving quickly, I see that.
He is moving quickly. He said 4.22 in the forty?
In the car.
In the car, yeah. I read a 4.22, but it was for 30 yards.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So we got item A, Churchill Construction bids, 2013 bond.
So, as you know, the sole project this summer, large project out of the 2013 bid is going to be Churchill High School. And we have sent out, oop, I'm on the wrong page here. Let me get to my, I was on Allison's item still. And we, along with the owner's rep, Plant Moran Cressa, of which Paul Terrell is here representing, we had put out a request for bids in multiple areas for the construction project. It's a very large process because all the bidding is done at once. And as you know, last week during the study session, Mr. Terrell came with the binder and did an overview for the board during the study session. So what we wanted to do was today, take a look in a little bit more depth, have an opportunity to answer your questions if you have them. It's a similar process to what's occurred in the first three phases, but this would be phase four, of course. So with that, I know you had an opportunity to, I'm sure you've taken the binders and flipped through them and sort of came up with your questions and whatnot. But I think before we get to that, just for a general opportunity to give, I'll ask Paul to go through the binder again, have a little bit more detail on what the process was, where we're at, and how we ended up. Because we did end up having some bidders pull out, and we had some, you know, changes here and there. But from, based upon what you have in the binder, that is still, nothing has changed in the last week, right? Nothing's changed, Paul, right? Okay. Nothing has changed in the, nothing's changed in the last week. But there, there are unique pieces, too, because unlike going out for a bid for a singular item, this is a 17-plus million dollar in the end, which isn't shown here, just to clarify, because there, there still are, the paint is not on there and the CM fees, et cetera. But I'll let Paul kind of get into that some more. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Terrell and allow him to go through the process a little bit, and then we'll be able to answer your questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Francis. So on January 23, construction documents were issued. Those documents, we had been working on, well, depending on how you count, for a few years, getting the design exactly right for Churchill with a couple different administrations in that building, and then with the administration of the district overall. Those drawings went out on the 23rd of January. On February 10, we received over 90 bid proposals, which is pretty good coverage. It's pretty busy out there these days. It's pretty hard to get contractors to bid work. There's just so much work and not enough of them. Really, when the economy had its downturn, a lot of construction contractors went out of business or left the state, leaving, you know, far fewer to do the work. But now that times are good, that we have, which is definitely a pleasant thing, that there's that much work, but it does make bidding a challenge. So after bids were opened and tabulated, and interviews were done by the CM, the AE, and the rest of the team, we are here this evening to recommend most of the project for award, about $15,585,535, which does include a few alternates, which are listed in our letter. That is most of the project. As Mr. Francis mentioned, there's one bid division that is not included in that, which is the painting. As you know, we've had some challenges with the painting at some of the other buildings. Stevenson High School, which took some extensive remediation. Some of the first and second phases of the bond, we've had some challenges with adhesion. We're really trying to do our due diligence to make sure that we do not have any problems like that going forward. Last year's buildings came out much better, and we, again, took some additional time to make sure we had the specifications right, to make sure the painters had a good plan, that they understood the intent of the design documents and specifications. We're really trying to do the same due diligence again this year. So we will have that ready in the next couple of weeks, but we wanted to make sure it was 100% correct, so. In addition to that, because we don't have the entire, all the hard construction ready to award, we're holding off on the CM fees and costs, which we're still reviewing, and then the construction contingency amount, which will be a factor depending on what the final number is. So right now, we're recommending 15, just under 15.6 million. We are expecting the final number to come in right around 18.3 million to 18.4 million. If you look at the budget, which is on tab C2, right now, the budget was originally 17.369 million, and we had requested probably six months ago or so that the board, or four months or so ago, that the board looked at adding a million dollars to that number. There was quite a bit of mechanical work at Churchill that we had talked about doing. It wasn't in the, the original bond scope, but it was work that needed to be done to make the building more energy efficient, to make some modernization to the energy ratings on the mechanical equipment. You know, you guys had a pretty big chiller and cooling tower over there that really were oversized for the building. So to get rid of those, go to DX Cooling, which I'm getting too technical, you know, but to go to a different cooling system just made a lot of sense at this time, so. So that's what that additional million dollars was for. That million dollars would come out of the sinking fund, was the plan, if we needed it, and it looks like we probably will. So we'll be back with more on that when we have the, the balance of the awards for Churchill.
So just to pop in, you know, not unlike what we did at Stevenson and Franklin. So when we had to increase the site work and some of the mechanical units over at Franklin and the site work at Stevenson, we increased and augmented those budgets to cover those costs appropriately out of the sinking fund to the tune of about $2.5 million per school. And so this is looking at about a million dollars for this project.
So if you are already on page C2, you can see the hard construction budgets and actuals, CM fees and costs, budgets and actuals, the contingency, and then the total, and then the footnote regarding the million dollars from the sinking fund. Excuse me. C3 is OCH, George W. OCH Company's Award Recommendation Letter. It gives a little bit more detail. As Mr. Francis mentioned, there were a few contractors who were the apparent low bidder who have asked to rescind their bids. You'll see Le Duke Roofing and Sheet Metal, A&amp;M Construction, B&amp;B Testing, Redonel Electric. For the most part, those were, well, actually, all of these in this case were pretty honest mistakes, we think. You know, on bid day, it gets a little, a little bit crazy out there. You've got numbers flying in at the last second. You've got people in the parking lot writing down bid forms, running in just as the clock strikes one, or noon, or whatever the pits are due. So it does happen that people have mistakes in their bids or compiling their numbers. If they're honest mistakes, we usually, you know, thank them for their time and efforts and then allow them to rescind their bids, which in this case, I think all four of these were. We're certainly looking for these same firms to submit bids on future work, so we want to keep a good relationship with them going forward. So the letter from OCH kind of gives a little bit more detail, and behind that, you'll see those letters from those firms asking to pull their bids, so to speak. And then behind that, you'll also see some bid tabulations, which will give you all the detail on all the different 90 bidders that had given proposals on the project. A lot of detail. The actual bids are sitting over in the business office if you so wanted to see those. But it's pretty standard. Nothing too much out of the ordinary from any of the other bid packages that we presented before, so.
Questions? Questions?
When do we anticipate the bids for the painting to come to us?
I would say later this month.
Okay.
Very close.
We're hoping, we're hoping to aim for April meeting. But that's just.
Either late, late March, early April.
That's, and that's enough time to get started.
Yeah. Painting is probably an easy one. There's not any long lead times. It's really just making sure you got the right paints back, so.
Right. Sounds good. Thanks.
Any other questions?
And one of the items, just to clarify for those watching at home, the reason that we, we gave you the binder last week during the study session, and the reason we have our special meeting later this evening for this is to vote on this item plus a couple more that have to do with the construction project. And again, for those who are tuning in for the first time and hear this kind of discussion, it's a timetable piece. We don't have a meeting next week. Our next meeting is two weeks from now, which is the 20th. We're actually turning over the auditorium at Churchill on Monday, March 20. So time is of the essence. We need to have the board consider this, and if you vote and pass it, we want We need to have the board consider this, and if you vote and pass it, we want to get POs out to the company so they can get started.
Along those same lines, painting is a pretty easy, short lead time. There are a lot of pieces of equipment we need to go through the submittal process on, a lot of the mechanical units, electrical gear, light fixtures, things like that, that do take six, eight, ten weeks to get. We want to make sure we get those ordered as soon as possible. Windows, things like that, so.
So it might be helpful for the board, just as a reminder, since this is an extended process, and we'll work over the next sixteen to eighteen months to complete this, would you just remind the board and our community the areas of Churchill that would be completed this summer?
Good question. So a lot of the building is phased. If you think about the auditorium, right, we're going in there, we're doing some demolition work, some abatement work. We're actually changing the elevations of the floors. A lot of that work takes more than just the summer, which is why we're getting an early start on it. But the heavy lifting in that area, rebuilding the stage, all the structural steel, the masonry, we're trying to get all that work done before the students and staff come back, because we want to make sure it's a safe environment for them. So there's going to be a lot of focus right out of the gate on the auditorium space and the spaces adjacent to that. As far as the summer goes, roughly half the building will be renovated. Some of the areas around the auditorium, some of the classroom wings, will get renovated this summer. And then really, as we work through the auditorium and the spaces directly adjacent to that, a lot of those spaces will be more throughout the year and then the following summer.
And most of the classrooms that will get done will be actually in the second portion during the summer of eighteen. But the auditorium, as Mr. Terrell stated, is such an intricate process. That's going to be done the entire time, including the auditorium being closed for use, much like in the other buildings. They're not, instead of being built from new, though, and having the old auditorium potentially for a little bit, it will be closed, and it will reopen completely refurbished and renovated in the fall of eighteen. So that's something that's going to work through both sections and both summers.
Yeah, high school's really just too big to renovate. We had talked about trying to renovate all the classroom spaces the first summer, but that takes your eye off getting the auditorium done and some of the safety concerns there. So it's really a two-summer project, just like Franklin and Stevenson were, and most high school projects.
Additionally, we're keeping, this is probably jumping ahead a little bit, when it comes to move management, we are actually using portions of the school that are not being renovated as storage spaces, correct?
Yep, that's correct, and we're hoping to save some money and not have to pay rental fees, and obviously, as the movers are moving things around the building, the farther they have to walk, the more time it takes, the more money it costs. So we're hoping to save some dollars on the storage fees and then on the labor as part of the move, so, which I think we, I think we did realize, so.
But stay tuned, move management is up next.
Good segment.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing done, then this is going to go on for our special meeting.
This evening.
This evening, right.
Thank you.
All right, then that'll take us to item 3B Churchill Technology Move Management Bid 2013 Bond.
So now we're in tab A1.
Yeah, the binder is not following.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We just wanted to make sure that Evan was on his toes and staying awake for the fun portion of the meeting. Just real quick, as a refresher, for the move management, this is technology move management. It's a request for bids for the move management on our IT end of things at Churchill, and we did have the RFP available on January 23rd of 2017, and responses will do on February 9th of 17. And we got three responses. Plant Maran Cressa reviewed the information and processed it, and I'll let Paul quickly run through the bid tab, just to clarify and refresh the board from last week, and also let the community know how that turned out and where we're at with the IT move management.
So again, very similar process. You know, everything was bid out publicly in January with bids received in February. The low bidder that we're recommending, responsible low bidder, is Corrigan Moving Systems. They've actually done work on the bond in the last couple of years. They've done some of the moving for us, and then some of the IT move as well. We're very confident that they can take care of the project for us and get everything out of the way. We really put those guys under a microscope, because we can't do a lot of our work until everything's out of the way and safe and secure, so I'm glad to see that Corrigan was one of the firms that responded and the one that would ultimately be recommended, so.
And if you notice on B2, it did come in a little more, just a touch more than eight thousand dollars, under our budget line for the technology move management.
And then B3, you'll see the bid tabulation. So for the IT, we actually had three, three bidders with pretty comparable numbers, so pretty much where we expected them.
Any questions? Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you. This covers both summers, correct?
It does.
This would be the 2017 and 2018, this price?
That's correct, so it's both phases.
For Phase Four.
The whole thing.
It should be the whole thing.
Okay, thank you.
The high schools running over two summers are still considered back into the original summer of their phase.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Paul, exactly what's included in the technology portion of the move management? What are they actually moving?
Believe it or not, this is one of the more complicated pieces of the bond. We spent a ton of time before the first phase of the bond, talking through all the little pieces and parts. If you think about, technology's kind of a broad word, but it's everything from computers and printers and copiers, fax machines, phones, projection systems, smart boards, so really, it's.
Sound systems.
Sound system. It's working with the IT department and the IT portion of the bond to talk about, okay, what's going to be replaced, when will it be replaced, has it already been replaced, how do we take care of it, how do we move it, reinstall it? Does it make sense to move an old computer that may be recycled anyway, and you're going to spend, you know, fifty to a hundred dollars to move that, and then it doesn't really have any intrinsic value anymore? So it's been, the first summer was a little rocky, but we worked the bugs out, and so this really is mostly computers, printers, that type of thing, but there's a lot of little pieces and parts to it, so.
And then get it back and unpack it in.
And get it operational.
Before the start of school, get it operational before.
So they actually have to test everything, make sure that it boots up, make sure that it functions, so. And then obviously, the district's IT department is a big piece of that as well, helping to troubleshoot issues. Inevitably, there's cords missing and jacks and plugs and things, and we've got to have an extra supply of, so the district really helps us get everything back up and running.
So is there a determination before it's actually packed up, whether or not that that item is coming back after the renovations?
Everything's tagged and labeled. Every cord is tagged and labeled. It's pretty, it's a pretty thorough process, I have to say.
Sounds pretty extensive.
It is.
Okay.
Just a quick question. This is also able to come out of the bond funds, is it covered by bond fund?
Correct.
And then it also includes, I think we talked about last time, staff to be there, one, an IT staff, one or two staff people, when our staff comes back, correct? To make sure everything is moving, or?
Yep. So we've had a lot of conversations about, again, making sure those labs and computers are actually functioning. The main office is kind of, obviously, the main area that we try to focus on, because if they can't get everybody up and running and make copies and get teachers ready, then the rest of the building has trouble functioning. So we do have a couple extra hours in here for people to be on-site that first week as teachers come back, to make sure that everything gets up and operational for them, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing done, this again will be on our special meeting tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Thank you on that item. Then we'll move to item C Churchill Move Management Bid 2013 Bond, and this is tab A.
This is A.
Tab.
Tab A.
Next time, we will try to get them in the same order as the adjournments.
It keeps us on.
It keeps us on.
Got to leave room for improvement.
So very similar to the technology move management, the general move management, and opened up on January 23rd, and was due on February 9th, and we had five respondents, four of which were reg, because one didn't qualify. And this is the traditional move, and again, Phase Four, meaning both, the entire project, this bid is covering.
Yep, so you'll see ProfessionalMovers.com is the firm being recommended for ninety-three thousand, two seventy-seven, with some contingency dollars as well. If you look at the overall budget, we're just a little bit underneath where we had anticipated, which is good. And then, you know, the bid coverage was, was pretty tight. The numbers tend to swing a lot on moving. Really has a lot to do with their schedules and if they're already booked or not. If you think about it, every school project in the state of Michigan, or in southeastern Michigan, is all trying to move out over the same weekend, so labor becomes a critical issue. And then trying to move back in on the same weekend, right? So we try to get them in a little bit earlier if we can to get ahead of the rush, but it really just comes down to how much work they've already been awarded and what their resources are, so.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Mr. Terrell, on the ProfessionalMovers.com, under comments, it says clarifications. What does that refer to?
I believe they had some clarifications just on the schedule, more than anything else, and some of the additional labor hours that we'd asked them to include again, to make sure that things were, that things were put back together the last week when the teachers come back, to make sure that they had the right resources in place and were able to move around as we needed them to, from building to building. So I don't think it was anything major. If you look at their bid, they're at ninety-three thousand dollars compared to one oh seven for Stevens. So it's roughly ten percent or fifteen percent difference. And as we kind of talk through it with them, you know, they definitely have the resources available. Some of the other firms, you know, Corrigan's done a lot of the moving for us in the past, Stevens has done a lot, Premier's done a lot. The movers, the guys that are kind of running those crews, tend to move around a lot, so we kind of run into, some of them have done moves different summers for different firms, but, you know, done work for us both summers, so. So I'm pretty confident that the group they have can take care of the job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So this is the move of everything else other than technology, right?
Everything except for technology, yep. So you're talking about, the teachers typically are packing their rooms up, putting things in boxes, the district supplies, and then these guys are coming in, making sure all the furniture is labeled, every desk, every chair, the teachers' desks and chairs, book carts, all the boxes that get packed up, pretty much emptying the entire rooms out. Again, if we can use the building for storage, we are, in this case, to try to save some of that labor cost and the travel distances and the storage fees on the trailers.
We're not doing any trailers.
I don't believe so. We usually write the bid to say, if you can't fit everything in the spaces we're giving you, then it's up to them to include that in their bid, so that we don't get caught short at all. So we try to look around the corners as much as we can, but.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing done, this also is on our.
Special.
Special meeting tonight.
It is.
All right, then that'll move us to item 3D Paving Projects for Summer 2017 Sinking Fund. This is not in the binder.
So the paving projects are out of sinking fund. We have five schools, and as we've been doing, after a school has completed renovation, we have gone back and tested and reviewed the parking lots. Oftentimes, they can become damaged even more so with all the heavy equipment and machinery that's on there from the renovation. For this upcoming summer, we have used NTH to help us look through, it's the company that we've used as civil engineers in the past, and we're looking at five buildings, Franklin High School, Holmes Middle School, Hoover Elementary, Randolph Elementary, and Grant Elementary, to do our paving projects at. So right now, and we've, as we've discussed in the past, we do have a planned sinking fund project for the water main over at Holmes. This is not currently encompassing that. That is, that is upcoming, and it will be timed out when the actual work is done, so that the water main would be done first, before the paving. But right now, we're only bringing the five paving projects out of sinking fund, because that's what we're prepared with right now. So we want to get that up and out on the street. I'll turn it over to Paul to give a little overview, and then we can answer your questions.
So again, bids were put out publicly advertised in February, early February, and bids were received on February 23rd. We had three proposals for the five different projects, Franklin, Holmes, Hoover, Randolph, and Grant. Three firms that bid this work are three that really specialize in school, summer parking lot, construction, nagel paving, T&amp;M, and Best Asphalt. Pretty much every time I bid a school job, those are the three guys that are on the list. It's funny, we bid another project a week earlier, and they were the same three firms, but flipped, where the high was the low, the low was the high, and the middle was, unfortunately, the middle again. So they tend to go after certain jobs more aggressively, depending on how far away the plant is and the workforce is. So no big surprise, Nagel Paving, who's done some work for us in the district before as part of the bond, was the low bidder. And roughly nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty, I guess exactly, is the hard construction number with contingency of about ninety-eight thousand dollars. There are some allowances in that number for undercuts. Inevitably, when you start digging in the ground, you're going to find soft soils or wet soils underneath the parking lot, which is, in a lot of cases, why they failed to begin with. Thirty, forty years ago, they didn't put as much stone underneath them. There's actually an interesting article in the paper this weekend about M.D.A., looking at building roads for thirty or fifty years versus twenty, and what the payback is. So we get into a lot of that, too. Should we just mill and cap the lot? Should we rip it out, dig down, put in more stones, so that it'll last longer? What are the paybacks, the lifecycle costs, things like that? So we spent a lot of time walking the sites. Scott Smith and I walked them a couple of years ago. We walked them again. Some of the maintenance staff walked them with NTH again, just this past year, looking at water issues, looking at subsurface conditions. We took a lot of borings and did a lot of survey work to try to figure out what the right scope was, and this is what we think is prudent at this time. There were a couple of projects that were a little bit more complicated. We didn't think we could get done this summer. The water main, we're still working on. Churchill's tennis courts, we're still working on designing, hoping to get done this summer. But Roosevelt and Cooper were two of the other projects that we've completed as part of the bond, that have a lot of water issues or water detention issues, where we didn't think we could get the permits approved fast enough through Wayne County and through the city in order to get them done this summer. Those are kind of on the docket for next year, if you will, just because the design's a little bit more complicated and the approval process is a little bit longer. But these projects were fairly simple, and after, like I said, going through the sites and going through the design with the staff, with everybody, we're ready to recommend them for award. There are a few other projects that we're talking about as well. Obviously, some of the buildings that are going to have a few more students next year, we're looking at making sure bus traffic will be routed effectively, that parent drop-off will be adequate, that some of the lots may need to be restripped or reconfigured a little bit. There's only so much we can do this summer, because we can't add a lot of impervious area, you know, or we get into stormwater detention and things, again, that take longer to get through the approval and the design process. But we're going to make those lots as functional as we can within the existing footprints, so. Those will be, we're still working on the design for those. We'll probably be bringing those back at a later date for the board's review, so.
Something I was going to say, and I'm going to say it again anyway, even though Mr. Terrell just said it, is just for clarification, it's not as easy or as simple to simply say, go widen that, or go make that bigger, or slap down some more asphalt, because you can, you can only have so much impervious surface if you make it larger. If we put down more permanent surface, you go through the current process of Wayne County, it's not a very quick and easy process, takes a lot of time, so it's, it's hard to, you know, it, it's hard to say, oh, no problem, we'll, we'll just go drop some asphalt down somewhere. That's, that's not a realistic scenario in any way, shape, or form. So I just want to make sure that we, we put that out and explain that again.
Questions? Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you. You may have already explained this, but how do you figure a construction contingency cost? How, how does that, I mean, you have a hard construction cost, but then I see, like, to the dollar, you have a.
It's ten percent.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
So we try to.
That makes sense. Now that I see it.
We have a crystal ball.
There it is. I was thinking, how does this work?
Yeah, sometimes we do include more than ten percent. Actually, for Churchill High School, because it's such a big project, will probably carry more like seven or eight percent.
Okay.
If it's a smaller project, we might carry twenty. We're really just trying to. We're really just trying to take our best educated guess as to what we think we may need.
Well, that makes sense, now that I look at it.
And then, just so you know, when we first started the bond project, we set up some accounting procedures.
Uh-huh.
And if, in the event that we had to go over that amount, we would have to come back to the board for your authority.
And ask for additional.
Exactly.
Thanks.
Mr. Senator, you had a question?
Yeah, just talking a little bit about the pavement. You discussed different scenarios for different needs. What percentage do you think is just tear out, put stone down, and completely redo? And what is more-
It depends, and okay, answer me.
I mean, it depends. Lot by lot, it depends. I can tell you, here's a good example, if you would. Holmes Middle School, when we originally looked at that lot, we knew that the drive needed to be torn out and replaced. But we looked at the back lot, which I guess would be the south lot. Originally, we were going to just mill and cap that lot, but as we looked into it more, there's a lot of expansion cracking in there. And if you mill and cap it, you really can't bridge that crack. That crack means that there's something else going on subsurface. So we're, originally, we were just going to mill and cap it. We decided to defer it for now. Now, if you're using that lot, you might walk by and go, wow, why didn't these guys fix that? The reason was because to fix it, we would have to completely rip the lot out, rip all the stone out underneath, replace it down about twelve inches, and then bring the asphalt back up. And we think that lot still has some years of life left in it. We think we could probably, if we crack seal and do some other things, we may be able to get another five or seven years of life out of that lot, and then replace it at that time. So we're really trying to be, again, I've said before, but good stewards with all the dollars that we have, look at things pragmatically and not, I can tell you from experience, I hate doing things twice. I'd rather do it once correctly than come back and replace it again. So we're trying to, I guess, live up to that, if you will.
So I know it sometimes seems odd. You were just here. Why didn't you just do the whole thing while you were here? It, it doesn't always make good fiscal sense to, to do that. It would be great if we could tear out every inch of something and put in every inch back, but sometimes that doesn't make good sense because you have life left in something, and we don't have enough money in the, you know, in the fund to do absolutely everything, so.
Two, for budgeting purposes, we try to stagger out the work, because the last thing you want is, you know, all your parking lots going bad this same year, and now you don't have the money to replace all of them. Same thing with your mechanical equipment, or your light fixtures, or your roofs, or things like that, so.
Mrs. Jarvis, any questions?
Thank you. Does this quote include striping?
It does for the areas that we're repaving.
But not for the whole parking lot?
Not necessarily for the whole parking lot. In some instances, we're striping adjacent areas, because if you're only doing half the lot, you pretty much have to make it all layout correctly. But if, if we're not in a certain parking lot, then we're not restriping.
When we get to the point where we're talking about striping, I just wanted to put in a bid to have, to work with the city clerk and possibly paint in the fifty-yard line for voting days?
Oh.
Instead of drawing a chalk line everywhere.
Yeah, that should be-
And I don't know if that's going to be part that's repaved under the, the new paving, or if that would come under painting old paving.
Probably depend on the building.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's something we could look into, for sure.
Mrs. Frank.
I don't remember if we talked about this or not, but on these buildings that we're redoing, is it just based upon the, the paving surface, or is it worked, or have you worked in conjunction with the principals at the buildings to say, is this layout functional for you? Or we're not even going there, we're really just looking at the, the asphalt? Or are we talking about, is this the way you want it? Or is there increased, like, even how you're lining it and that sort of thing? How much have we looked into the principals and working with the principals for the layout so we are not doing things twice as, as we get into it if it's not functional for what they need?
Some, some of the pieces, and we've worked with Director of Elementary Cindy Scott on the elementary buildings, and, and Mr. Archibald, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary. And when we do these buildings, we, we sit with them first and say, you know, does this make sense? But a big piece of it, too, is just what is possible. We've had NTH actually give us stacking plans, meaning the buses. So we also work with Dr. Terrell with the Student Services End, saying, if there's a center program there. And we also work with Peggy Straffan from Transportation, how many buses come to building X because it's a center? So we have to take all of those pieces into account. I think some of what you're asking is maybe where the lines are striped for parking, or I'm not a hundred percent sure, but part of that is NTH actually creates the best plan to maximize the stacking of the buses, which would minimize the walk for students or the danger for students. You wouldn't want them having to play Frogger across the, the parking lot.
Right, right, right.
So we try to work that as one piece. By the way, reference for people at home that probably do. And then, you know, the, the other piece being, how many cars can we fit in it to park it?
Right.
And sometimes it's a matter of angled is better, or not as good as straight parking. And then there's, we, you know, the, also the piece that they give us where it's, look, we may have to remove a few spaces, but that's going to give you a better turn for parents when they do the drop-off to, to come out. So those are all part of it. There's a point where we have to say, of these plans, we, we like this one the best, which we have done. We all sit down as a team and say, of the most viable plans, we choose Plan Three, but we really have to trust in the organization that, that are the professionals in this to say, how would this work the best? Which is, way does this flow most properly? And how can we get the most spots, but also have a proper turning radius for the buses, as well as where the parents can flow to get in and out for the drop-off? So, I mean, I know I rely on those reports from them. I can let you say from your end.
Yep, no, I think that was a great summary. There's also, you know, there's turning radiuses for fire trucks and access in emergency situations and things like that that have to be taken into account. There's codes on handicap spaces and things like that as well. So really, we're relying a lot on the civil engineers and the geotechnical engineers that are doing the subsurface work, the borings, to make sure they understand what's underneath the lot, whether it's a replacement, a full replacement, or a mill and cap situation.
And where the buses are going to stack and turn more, they create lots, you know, in a more, what's the word I'm looking for? Astoried is not the right word, but-
Yeah, actually, the, where the bus traffic is, where the garbage trucks that pick up the dumpsters, believe it or not-
It's thicker.
The profile of the asphalt and the stone base has to be a little thicker.
So all that gets laid out first so they know where to pour properly.
Okay. So from there, Mrs. Frank, oftentimes what we do, so that's for the design of the lot and the design of the striping, et cetera. I think a piece you're talking about, too, is the general day-to-day flow.
Right.
Which, you know, we've, many of us have had the pleasure of, of experiencing and trying to manage. And so for that, there are times when we may rely on folks from our Maintenance and Operations Department to come out and, and with the principal and with the folks who work that process, to take a look at the flow and make suggestions to changes in traffic patterns. As you've seen, we've done that at, at different schools, where we may have buses using one lot and parents using another as drop-off, making some changes to that, making some changes to the way that parents enter and exit lots. Generally, that would be more of an internal process. We've also used members of our Livonia Police Department as we look at folks from the Traffic Commission and folks who have experience with monitoring traffic flow in those school areas. They've been great resources to us as well. So it's really a two-part process. This is the technical piece of that. And then, I think we've, we've said this before, and certainly it's, it's, it's not meant to be facetious, we seriously do know that, you know, parking lots are a challenge. So I don't know that we could make a lot big enough where we would not have a challenge at those high-peak times.
Right.
At drop-off and at pickup. And so what we try to do is mitigate that the best that we can. And so we're making some changes, taking a look at, NTH did do drawings based on the anticipated enrollment for next year, as well as the anticipated increase in buses for schools that are going to be gaining a center program that may have not in the past. And so they've, again, given us plans to take a look at. That's part of our transition work. At some schools, we're able to make those changes this year. At other schools, as both Mr. Francis and Mr. Terrell explained, it's going to require more extensive permitting and a little bit more time. And so we'll try to make some more minor tweaks, and also talk more about that Phase Two part that I was just talking about, which is the flow, managing that, who's out there helping with that, what, you know, how can we pattern some of that behavior for adults?
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's all part of that process, but in some ways, almost a separate process from the, the planning for, for the lot to some extent.
Okay. Makes sense.
Any questions? I just want to get a clarification on the Holmes. Is the, the bid, does that include Holmes, the Holmes paving? Because the way I'm reading this, it says a contract award at Franklin High School, Holmes Middle School, et cetera, et cetera. So is, is that included in the bid?
It's the paving portion, but not the water main replacement portion.
We'll do, we'll bring that separate.
And it's for the, for the drive, not for that lot, back lot you were talking, not for the south lot you were talking about?
There is some work into the back lot, but we're not replacing the entire thing like we had originally anticipated.
Is the, is the repair of the water main going to cause damage to the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll do it, we'll do it after.
We had actually looked at-
That's why we're, okay.
We had looked at doing like a subsurface replacement, they call pipe bursting, where you use the old pipe as like a, not a conduit, but actually like a pathway to push the new pipe. And it, there was too many conflicts with adjacent utilities and things like that, so we are going to have to dig up and put in a new line.
We're, we're bringing you the Holmes paving first, and then we'll bring the Holmes water main by promise. We'll actually do the Holmes water main first, and then we'll-
Make sure we have it in the right order here.
We just, again, on your toes, on your toes.
Do things once the right way, not twice.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, then this will go on, the special meeting tonight as well. Thank you, gentlemen, on that.
Thank you.
Then that'll move us to item three E, proposal from Great Northern Consulting Company.
Want to thank Mr. Terrell for, for coming last weekend, this evening, to, to do the overview and to help answer our questions on these items. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so with regarding Great Northern, we'd like to recommend entering into an agreement with Mr. Bill Bowman of Great Northern Consulting Group in order for him to assist the district in the investigation and marketing of the properties at Nankin Mills, Ford Skill Center, Old Perrinville, and Clay. Mr. Bowman is not a real estate agent, nor is he a broker. He simply does investigation and market research, and helps advise us as to how best to market our properties. The district has worked with Mr. Bowman in the recent past, and we are satisfied with his work, if you recall. He worked with us on the Washington, Nankin, and Old Perrinville. If I say Perrinville at some point without saying old in front of it, please, just, this is my disclaimer, that I am referring to Old Perrinville, the island on Farmington Road at, at Ann Arbor Trail, okay? So we, we would like to enter into agreement with him. You've been given the agreement. I, just so you know, a little background on the last agreement from the fourteen, fifteen school year, which was originally dated in November of two thousand and fourteen, I went back and took a look at that agreement and the hourly rates, et cetera, that were in there. The scope is a very similar scope of work as to what we're asking him to do currently, and the pricing has not increased in those, in those years. I guess you could call it two and a half years, almost three years. So that's, good to know that the hourly rates, et cetera, in there are, are consistent and not out of line, and they are the same amounts. And if you take a look at your agreement, one of the, the pieces has already actually been accomplished, the due diligence is, is already, has already been, like I said, taken care of. He's just got to get some updates on things, and then he would help us with the marketing of those, those pieces of land. We've asked him to look at Nankin and Ford Skill and Old Perrinville, both as a potential singular unit, as well as breaking it out separately based upon what the market would bear and, and what any interested party would be desirous of. Theoretically, we, we would certainly believe that the Nankin property and the Skill Center, if you recall, we had to split those and get individual sit numbers, suitable numbers for them, but it would actually probably be more appealing as a single parcel. But be there as it may, all three of those are individual parcels now, because we created it that way. So we're going to ask him to market it in multiple ways, so it's best for the district. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm just going to jump in. So you'll see that in his proposal, very similar to the last time that he brought this forward to us, he has four phases of his work, as Mr. Francis indicated. He's already completed the phase regarding the due diligence. We shared that with you in a prior meeting with regard to those sites. Is, as we would, with your approval, we would like to continue to move forward with Phase Three, which is really the marketing of those properties. Again, as you know, this, this, this takes a considerable amount of time. This is not a quick process. There is not only a significant amount of due diligence on our part before we go to market with this, but then for any potential buyer, and then as we move through the closing process and so on. So this can take a considerable amount of time. You might recall that Mrs. Smith just recently pulled back on, on our original estimation that we would be able to realize some revenue enhancement this year. Again, as we worked through those processes through part of the District Enrollment and Building Use Committee, and, and looked and, and put some of these other things on hold until we really worked through that entire process to determine use of our current facilities, then we were able to come back to this, which we had put a bit on the back burner for a few months, and we're ready to move forward with, with the proposed marketing of the sites that, that we've identified here. You'll also see in his proposal not to exceed dollar amounts, and so we have, we have a pretty good idea of where our maximum would be. Again, as he works through on that hourly amount, we've seen no increase since his original fees in two thousand and fourteen. He really did outstanding work for us the last time, and we were able to realize a significant revenue enhancement from the sale of the Washington property. So as we move forward with this, we'd like to be able to consider some of this revenue for our upcoming, for the next fiscal year. But again, that may even be, we may, we may not realize all of that into next year, but, but potentially even into the following year. So we'd like to recommend utilizing Mr. Bowman's services again, and he is truly an expert in this field. He not only has a great deal of experience with analyzing market value of the properties, but also then marketing that out, and is able to get this information out to developers, really across the state, that may be interested in these properties. So we, we realize great benefit from, from his services, much more than we may be able to do certainly in-house.
Questions? Mrs. Jarvis.
I just wanted to make sure that this doesn't conflict with our policy requiring an assessment for the sale of land.
Do you want to address it?
Yes. No, it does not.
Any other questions? Mr. Francis, I want, not only for the board's edification, but for the public's, that this is not a sales agreement, like, if I wanted to sell my house, I would engage an agent to sell it. This is a different type of agreement.
Correct.
Can you explain the difference?
Sure. Mr. Bowman, like I mentioned, is not a Realtor or a broker. He simply will be doing marketing for us. So he, with his connections throughout the state, with different organizations and construction organizations and companies, he would help us to best utilize our marketing scheme to draw in as many potential bidders as possible, potential purchasers as possible, and gives us a, a solid valuation of, of what we have. So in, in, for an example, he can, he can say, he will do the legwork and find if a piece of property is already planted and further along and ready for future building of a site and developing for single-family housing or not, which changes how much you should expect per piece of property for that. So he does a lot of that legwork, gives us the advice on, well, if it's planted, you should expect to get this much per parcel versus much less, because more work needs to be done by a builder, et cetera. So he, he is very knowledgeable in this and, and knowing widely in this area, and I think even around the state, for, for what he does. Again, he's not selling the property, he's advising us on marketing techniques of how we can, as the district, as the Board of Education, can sell this property.
One of the things, he's also very helpful in, in working with the developer, the purchaser with regard to municipal approvals. So working with the city, he is extraordinarily familiar with both Livonia and Westland, the requirements of our city, city planner. As you recall, there were a number of different tweaks that needed to be made at the Washington property as we took a look at the dedicated park site, and those pieces, as the developer moved forward with that. And so Mr. Bowman also has great familiarity and knowledge about municipal requirements. It is, um, as part of his service, is willing to support the purchaser, um, in that regard.
So as you noticed in fa- uh, phase four of his plan, i- is, is consulting. He would be consulting the board, the board would be selling these properties. He would not be paid a commission, uh, his work would be consultation.
Okay, just to clarify, so then if we decided to sell, would we then be getting a realtor? Or no, we would be doing this all as a board?
Right.
Gotcha, okay, so there wouldn't be an additional fee to hire a realtor or anything?
The board, no.
No.
There's no realtor, no broker.
No, okay.
Any other questions? So this will go on.
The March twentieth.
Regular twentieth, yeah.
Okay. Excellent. And, uh, then, then I'll move to three F, purchase of custodial equipment, two thousand and thirteen bond, Mr. Francis.
Okay, so out of two thousand and thirteen bond, I would like to, uh, recommend, uh, purchase of custodial cleaning equipment. We are looking to purchase six twenty-six inch rider auto scrubbers, and ten twenty-six inch stand-on auto scrubbers, and ten sixteen inch cleaning path carpet extractors. We have split this, we, we put out a request for proposal and, uh, bid, I should say, and, um, we have received s- uh, six respondents, but, uh, three of them did not qualify. We are splitting the bid between two companies, HP Products, which came in with the lowest responsible, uh, bid for the six twenty-six, twenty-six inch rider auto scrubbers, as well as HP Products coming in for the ten twenty-six inch stand-on auto scrubbers as the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, that would be a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. And then KSS Enterprises was the lowest responsible bidder, um, for the ten sixteen inch cleaning path carpet extractors for a total of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety. So both of those together would come to a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Um, you do have the bid tab in your packet, and a point of clarification, in case you notice that KSS looks like potentially, if you look at their total bid, that they could have done the whole, um, the whole kit and caboodle for the least amount. They actually bid, uh, a, a product that was not on their, the, the twenty-six inches, they had actually bid a smaller product, not the same thing, so hence, their price for them came in much lower. Uh, so, splitting them up, the two from HP, and then the one from KSS, and this would, uh, help our maintenance crews, actually, uh, all K-12 buildings, and it would speed up the process, currently they do, you have, uh, push behinds, and these auto riders would speed up the process, become more efficient. As you know, from years past, we have far less, uh, maintenance crews and custodial staff than we used to. Any type of efficiencies in their, in their duties, uh, goes a long way, not to mention the update in the equipment.
Questions? Seeing none, then this will go on, the twentieth as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Appreciate it, thank you, anything else?
Um, I think we're done with, uh, building in sight, thank you.
Nice night.
That'll move us on.
Do you want to stick around, we're gonna move into the regular meeting.
I'm gonna stick around, right here. This little spot right here.
Move us to, uh, curriculum, uh, Mrs. Bradford, anything?
We have nothing tonight.
Superintendent Ogles, anything to add? That'll move to item five, personnel, Mr. Centers, anything? Anything additional?
We do not, just a reminder that we have our workshop, uh, next week for our training, uh, so we'll begin at six. Um, it's a three and a half hour training, so eat your Wheaties next Monday. Uh, we'll meet from six to nine-thirty up in Conference Room A for our workshop with Mary Kerwin.
Great, then that'll move us to, uh, item six, Policy Committee, Mrs. Frank. Nothing, anything additional? Seeing none, that'll move us to item seven, Legislative Committee, Mrs. Jarvis.
Just a reminder that the, um, the ESA proposal, the ESA draft of the state is still available for public comment for one more week, um, so if you go to the Michigan Web, uh, Department of Ed website, there are links to go there and review it, and please take some time to look it over and make comments.
Very good, thank you, anything else? Thank you, Ms. Jarvis, that moves us to item A, Committee of the Whole. Uh, I have nothing additional for Committee of the Whole.
I do not, Vice President Johnson.
Thank you, that move, that brings us to the end of our agenda for the Committee of the Whole meeting, so we are concluded with that agenda, and we will, do we want to take a short break or move right into? Mrs. Bonnefield is suggesting a, a short meeting, so give us about.
Short break.
Five-minute break?
Five-minute break, and then we'll be right back, thank you. Good evening again, and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education for March sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Uh, Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Here.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Centers is here. Burton is absent, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Again, welcome to the, uh, Special Meeting of the Board of Education for March sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Uh, for those in the audience, if you'd like to follow along with us tonight, uh, you can pick up an agenda on the table outside of the boardroom. For those at home, if you'd like to go to our website, levoniapublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you will see the agendas, and you'll be able to pull one out and follow along with us. This is our voting meeting, uh, special voting meeting. Uh, if you tuned in for Committee of the Whole meeting that we had, uh, just a few moments ago, you will see, uh, more discussion on the items that we'll be voting on tonight. So this is, you, you may or may not hear a lot of discussion on these items as we move forward. Um, the first item that we have is Audience Communications. Audience Communications is the time that the community, uh, we give the community the opportunity to address the board. It is not the time for interaction between the board and the community members. It's the time for us to sit, uh, listen, and understand what the speaker has to say. As Mrs. Burton, uh, typically explains, the board has three roles. Those roles are to hire and evaluate the superintendent, uh, create and evaluate policy, and, uh, long-term strategic planning. If, uh, the speaker's subject matter deals with any of those three items, you can expect a response from the board. If it revolves around the day-to-day operations of, uh, the, uh, school district, then a response will most likely come from the administration. And tonight I have one blue slip, uh, Mr. Doug Coats. Good evening, Mr. Coats, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. And of course, uh, we have our three-minute time limit.
I won't take that one. I, I just wanted to pu- come before the board and publicly thank, uh, the Mr. Archibald and Mr. Francis and the other, uh, members of the Churchill Administrative Team today, um, Mr. Hague and, uh, Mr. Gibbons, and Ms. Helvengas, and Ms. Hunter, and Mr. E-Two for, um, really supporting the staff and students today really, uh, exceptionally well, I thought, and, uh, it was a tough day to be at Churchill, I think, but, um, they really felt, uh, a really strong community, um, like it was a real community today, I guess is the way I would say it, and I really, really, uh, proud to be a part of that community today, so, um, I think, um, you spoke earlier about Mr. Austin, and, uh, it's a tough loss to lose a colleague like that, in, uh, what should have been a happy day as he was getting ready to start track season. It was a tough day to lose, to lose him, but, uh, I really wanna just publicly say that I thought the school district administration and the administration of the building just was, uh, superb today, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coats. I do not have any other, uh, blue slips, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, item three, Approval of Bid Results for Churchill Construction, two thousand and thirteen bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Vice President.
Vice President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the, move that the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education approved the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the construction project budgets for Churchill High School in the amount of fifteen million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts with the recommend- recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, Mr. Francis.
Thank you, uh, as we just heard recently, uh, the, the specifics of the two thousand and seventeen summer project for Churchill High School through the two thousand and thirteen bond, uh, the recommended contractors for this construction project will provide the work that's needed and necessary to complete the renovation at Churchill High School, so we recommend that the board, um, proceeds through with the, uh, recommended vendors.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Centers to approve the bid results for Churchill Construction, two thousand and thirteen bond. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers says yes, Mrs. Bonnefield.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Vice President Johnson.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Centers. Now move us on to item four, Approval of Bid Results for Churchill Technology Move Management Services, two thousand and thirteen bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase Four Technology Move Management Services bid for the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars, and a contingency budget in the amount of four thousand, six hundred, forty-one dollars, for a total amount of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred, forty-one dollars, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts. authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts with the recommended contractor.
We have a, a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Vice President Johnson. The recommended contractor is going to be doing a very important job, even if it doesn't have a high price tag to it. It's going to be a very critical technology move. So we do recommend for the 2017 Phase Four Construction Project, that the board does approve the needed Technology Move Management Services.
All right. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the bid results for Churchill Technology Move Management Services 2013 Bond. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Vice President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Centers. That will move us on to item five, Approval of Bid Results for Churchill Move Management Services 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Phase Four Move Management Services bid for the amount of $93,277, and a contingency budget amount of $18,656, for a total amount of $111,933, and to authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts with the recommended contractor.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Francis?
Thank you, Vice President Johnson. The recommended contractor, ProfessionalMovers.com, for this 2017 Phase Four Construction Project will provide the work of, of moving and, and to storage, the furniture, et cetera, at Churchill High School, and they're greatly needed to complete the Move Management Services for the Churchill High School renovation.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve bid results for Churchill, Churchill Move Management Services 2013 Bond. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes. Motion passes. That moves us on to item six, Approval of Bid Results for Summer 2017 Paving Projects Sinking Fund. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve Nagel Paving Company, Novi Michigan, for paving projects at Franklin, Holmes, Hoover, Randolph, and Grant in the amount of $988,720, and a contingency budget amount of $98,872, for a total amount of $1,087,592, and authorize the superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contracts. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Francis?
Thank you again, Vice President Johnson. This project will provide pavement repairs at the five mentioned schools, Franklin High School, Holmes Middle School, Hoover, Randolph, and Grant Elementary Schools. We do recommend approval for the summer paving project.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve bid results for Summer 2017 Paving Project Sinking Fund. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Vice President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Centers. Next is item seven, and we will be moving into closed session. Recession to, so, closed session. May I have a motion, please?
Vice President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livon, Livonia Public Schools School District recess to closed session for the purpose of negotiations discussion. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, to recess to closed session for negotiation discussions. Superintendent Oakley, anything?
Only to note, we will not be coming back on camera, so we will be moving into closed session in the conference room, and that, and that will be it for this evening with regard to our viewing audience.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion to recess to closed session by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers. Mr. Centers, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers says yes. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Vice President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now in closed session. Thank you.